It is now seven o'clock and we'll call this meeting to order. A roll call shows that all five board members are here. And one student board member here is here and the other is excused. Uh, has this meeting been posted?
Yes, it has.
All right, we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and universal, political liberty and justice for all.
All right, are there any communications tonight?
There are. Vaping is a significant public health concern and unfortunately Greendale High School, like many other schools, is experiencing an increase in students vaping. Vaping is illegal for teens. Recent SUSO reports as well as data obtained from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey and the Greendale Health Department indicate there is an increasing number of students using vapes and vape products during the school day. Use of vapes is unhealthy and in violation of the school handbook and athletic codes, a code of conduct. To deter vaping in the bathrooms and ensure that all students feel safe using the bathrooms at school, Greendale High School has begun using the assistance of vape detection tools. On February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Department of Education issued a Dear Colleague Letter regarding compliance with federal laws based on the recent executive order. The letter specifically states that funding may be withheld if schools do not comply with the law. The Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction published information on the potential impact of loss of funds, which is on their website. Jonathan Mitchell has compiled local information regarding federal funding in Greendale Schools. Federal funding amounts to approximately five percent of the overall budget. Federal funding is administered by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction and paid to the district as a reimbursement. This time Greendale Schools is in compliance with the civil rights laws referenced in the Dear Colleague Letter and all federal laws, and we will continue to monitor the evolving interpretations to remain in compliance. In Greendale Schools, all students belong and are empowered to learn, grow, and engage as part of a global community. This mission statement, along with our vision cultivating excellence in every student, are guiding principles for the school district. We work each day to meet all students' needs for safety and learning with policies in place to support this. If you have questions, concerns, or needs, please contact me or any of the members of our school team. Over a hundred and fifty people attended the inaugural event of the Greendale Gala and many shared excitement and enthusiasm for this new collaboration between the Education Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Village of Greendale. Joe Bustos was honored as the spirit of Greendale by the Village, and the Greendale Education Foundation raised over four thousand five hundred dollars in donations through the raffles and silent auction. Thank you to those of you who were able to attend. I am working with each of the organizations so that we can reflect and improve on the event for next year. Congratulations to Brian Johnson, Greendale's varsity baseball coach. Coach Johnson was selected by the Wisconsin Baseball Coaches Association for the twenty twenty-five Ethics in Coaching Award. This award is presented for character, integrity, and respect, not only to opponents but officials, fans, and all athletic staff in the state. It was presented at the Wisconsin Baseball Association Coaches Association Hall of Fame banquet on Saturday, February fifteenth. Also, congratulations to Greendale High School Cheer on their state championship win in the traditional category at WACPC this weekend. The team earned the highest score across all divisions, and this is the first time that they have taken the title in this category this decade. The district would like to thank the Greendale Education Foundation for their donation of one thousand dollars to the district for student meal payment support. And that concludes my communications.
All right, thank you. Well, go over to you, Nick.
Perfect, yeah, so Greendale High School DECA is currently competing in the state competition in Lake Geneva this Monday through Wednesday, and is where NOAA is at this time. The high school student council executive committee recently met to discuss planning end of year activities and our next steps for various committees. And the GHS Spring Musical Adams Family is set to take place in the GHS auditorium on March seventh, eighth, fourteenth, and fifteenth at seven PM and March ninth at two PM. And that concludes my communications.
All right, thank you. Moving on, comments or questions from visitors? Not seeing any. Moving on, action item to approve last month, our last meeting's minutes. Before we do a motion, does anyone have any comments, concerns? Oh, all right, looking for a motion?
I move approval of the February third, twenty twenty-five regular board minutes as presented in Agenda Item one point one.
I second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Still no questions or comments? All right.
Yes.
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 Um, yes, motion passes. Moving on to monthly financials?
Yep, monthly financials were provided through the end of January twenty twenty-five. I can point out some highlights from that information. We're seeing an increase in revenues in the operational fund. So there we have the impact of the operational referendum and the reduction of debt prepayment. So when we account for our January tax receipt, there's a larger percentage of revenues that we've accounted for in our operation fund year to date. I would point out our non-referendum debt fund in Fund Thirty-eight. There we have some funds that are within our special education fund that are going to be transferred via our flow-through grant to pay for payment of our loan, state trust fund loan that covers renovation of the reset space. So that's a little bit lower than it was year to date last year. Other than that, the last remaining item was our Fund Ninety-nine, which is our cooperative fund. And that just has to do with timing of payments for member districts. And I know as of this evening, we've collected all of the signed contracts with those schools, so that's accounted for. And now it's a matter of getting those final payments accounted for in our system. On the expense side, we are where we would expect to be at this time of year in Fund Ten at forty point nine eight percent of expenditures. The Fund Thirty-nine referendum debt is a little bit higher, but the dollar figure is lower overall. And that has to do with a lower debt prepayment that was set aside in this year's budget. Capital Expansion Fund is at twenty-seven percent. That reflects the final payment has not been made on the boiler project that was done here at the high school. That project's now finished, so in the upcoming months, I would assume we'll see a bill for the rest of that project as that's now completed. And then that'll get caught up. Capital Projects Fund, the budget overall was lower and those projects have mainly been completed, so that's higher as a percentage. Our Food Service Fund, we've talked about in previous months that there were capital and equipment investments that we made there. And then our Community Service Fund is running below the year-to-date expenditures. And Mr. Broderick's done a really good job of tightening up that budget and watching that really closely. And we have some larger investments that we will make towards year-end. So when we think about the approved J.C. Park project with the playground, that'll not be installed until later on in spring, so we're not seeing the expenditures for that. We've signed the contract and have that equipment on order. And then Fund Ninety-nine, that cooperative just varies based on what's happening within the co-op and what's been approved month to month. But we have a procedure for how that's done amongst the school district members to get those expenses approved. So with that, be happy to take any questions the board has about the January financials.
Any questions for Jonathan? Not seen any. Thanks. All right, we will move on to approving the checks and disbursements. If no one has anything to add, we'll look for a motion.
I move the approval of the checks and disbursements as presented in Agenda Item two point three for one million nine hundred and one thousand six hundred and six dollars and eighteen cents.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second?
Yes.
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 Um, yes, motion passes. Moving on, personnel.
There are, there are two teacher resignations this evening. One is a retirement and one is a resignation. Both are listed as resignations because neither qualifies for a local benefit, but one does qualify for a state benefit. And we're looking for approval.
All right, thanks. Before we do a motion, no comments? Kathy, did you?
No.
All right, we'll do a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Action Item four point one, the personnel.
I second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Looking for a roll call?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And I'm yes, motion passes. Moving on, replacement of network switches.
So this was presented at the last board meeting. Network switches are part of the technology infrastructure that is on a cycle for replacement. There has been some delays in the cycle as we've been working to manage the budget, but it is critical that these get replaced. And there was a bidding process that you reviewed last time and we're looking for approval this evening.
No one has any questions, we'll look for a motion to approve.
I move approval of the purchase from Source One Technology for a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and eleven cents as presented in Agenda Item four point two.
I second.
We have a motion, a second. Looking for a roll call? We have a question.
Just a comment. Dr. Midsick, we talked about this today. There were three bids on this and we, maybe Jonathan would be the one to answer this, but we have accepted the lowest bid, but there has been a working relationship with this company before?
There has been, and I did additional research on this after the board, talked about it at the last meeting. The vendor that they're, the manufacturer of the equipment, each of these companies has to go out and seek a quote. And so the first one that gets that quote from the manufacturer may get a better rate on the equipment, the wholesale cost of the equipment itself. So I know there was concern about the disparity in these quotes. And so that's a factor of what the pricing is being quoted by the manufacturer themselves to each of these companies. But Source One is one that we have utilized in the past. We have high comfort level and believe they have the most information about our network system in terms of being able to bid this accurately.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, looking for a roll call?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And I'm yes, motion passes. Approving the charter school and grant application?
So this has been on the radar as a possibility over the last several years. Last, at the last meeting, I presented the format and the structure of the proposed charter school. A charter school of this nature works under an independent board and that board enters into a charter with the school board. The intent is that this charter school would be an instrumentality of the district, which means there's an independence, independent governance board and that that board sets policy and makes governance decisions for the charter school and the Greendale School District employs and pays staff directly. So it is, there is a relationship between the board of the Greendale Global and the school board. There is a relationship between the district and that staff work for the Greendale Schools in, within the charter school. So that is part of what is getting approved here is that you're approving a relationship to be formed between Greendale Global's independence, independent governance board and the Greendale School Board. And you're also approving, the second component is for grant funding. There is grant funding available through the state of Wisconsin. It is a federal grant to establish charter schools. And that grant, at this time, as we're looking at the grant application intending to submit for planning, it is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. But as we look at some of the implementation, it may exceed that one hundred and fifty thousand for the board. So our first round of grant application will go in on Wednesday of this week, and we need approval to do that. So those are the two things you're approving. Mr. Del Ponte is here this evening and he was not able to attend the last board meeting. He has been instrumental in communicating and working with the individuals who will be forming the independent charter board in vetting ideas and collecting information. And I just wanted to give him an opportunity to kind of walk you through what steps have happened over the last two years to arrive at the design of the charter school that is being brought forward. Is it on?
We're good now. Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having us here and for considering this proposal that's before you. We started these conversations two years ago, as Dr. Midsick said, and I think the big catalyst for those conversations was just recognizing that there are, you know, there's another need in our community possibly for some educ, for some options educationally for some students, especially families who live in Greendale but may not call Greendale Schools their home. And so we looked at some options and I think, you know, a charter school or some type of flexible learning option was always an option that we had at the forefront and we were considering a lot of. We pulled together a few key stakeholder groups over the past year. It would be a stakeholder group of staff members and then this past fall, a stakeholder group of community members who really just gave us some thoughts on what would be another option for families. And it could be Greendale students who live in Greendale, but they open and roll to another school. It could be Greendale students who currently homeschool, who might go to a parochial school, or it could be an option for students and families who are looking to open and roll into our district. So what, some of the things that we really learned over the past year, especially from the key stakeholders we talked, we talked to, is flexibility is really key. Families really love learning flexibility and so do students. They also like being able to, along with that, kind of control the pace of their learning. And they like to bring that forward and they like to be able to learn and, to learn and move forward kind of at their own pace. But there's also still, you know, with the flexibility of this, which would be primarily a virtual school, there's still a desire to have in-person contact, face-to-face contact, which is also really key, and that's a key proponent of this school too, is it's not just, here's a Chromebook and go and plug away at a program. It's opportunities for students to come here or to come to a place in the community to receive learning coaching, to receive SEL instruction, and to just really look at, you know, all those other aspects of being a student too. So it's a, it's been a great process. It's been great working with Dr. Midsick and the team. And I really can't advocate for this enough because the more options we can put out in the marketplace for schools here in Greendale, we'll continue to be a destination district for families and for students for sure.
So we're happy to answer any questions, but what we're looking for is the board to take action to approve the formation of the charter school as an instrumentality of the district and authorization for administration to apply for the grant.
I just want to say that I think this is a fantastic idea because it does provide flexibility for parents. My, my middle daughter is benefiting immensely from online high school. And it is, it has completely changed her from, you know, a kid who wasn't quite sure about being in physical school to thriving in online high school. So I think it's a great opportunity for kids and I'm glad that we're bringing it forward.
Does anyone else have anything to add?
Just a quick question. So if the grant does not get approved, do we still, are we still planning on going forward?
Yes, we would be planning to go forward. It would be a little more sticky to do. What we know is that the funding for the charter school will be self-sustaining moving down the line as we've looked at pricing for seats within ASU, Prep Global, and the cost of that instructional course, those courses and that instruction, which is a combination of synchronous lectures one time a week and then online coursework, but the lectures are recorded. So we've looked at all the pricing and it is self-sustaining. So what we might have to do is scale back on some of the professional development and build it while we're flying rather than having that, that early launch of the information of the training and the practice. And we may have to do, train fewer people initially and then do some work to bring them up to speed until revenue comes in for membership in the school.
Just had a question. First of all, is this a competitive grant? Like, are there only a set number of districts that are being considered for this?
It is a competitive grant. We don't know until the grant application period closes how many schools have applied for the funding that is available, but there is a sizable amount of grant money available. And so it's possible that we could be funded at a partial amount of our request if there is more grant applications then available. But this is something that we think we, we should get funding for, but it is competitive. And if there's a lot of charter schools that are looking to launch, we may not have access to some of the funds.
And then on that note, thank you for that. With this, this is for the planning, correct?
Correct.
This is for the planning portion. I want to, first of all, highlight that I think it's important that there's an SEL planning component in there. I think with virtual learning, a lot of times that can be a missing part with the in-person opportunities. So I appreciate that you're looking into that so that students who may be interested in having that personal approach can do that. I had a question regarding special ed as it pertains to this particular grant. Well, this grant is for the planning, but if this were to go through, would there be special ed funding for students that would be virtual?
So the charter school right now, we have not designated how many regular education seats and how many special education seats would be available. That's something that we will determine before we market to the general population for seats in the charter. The funding would be, the, the funding mechanism for students receiving special education services in a charter school that's an instrumentality of the district would be the same as our regular schools.
And then what is the plan to, once hopefully we get this grant, but moving forward with this, how do we market this to the community?
So the marketing materials will be, the, this first year, we'll be doing some direct marketing to a number of groups. One group is a group of students who are currently registered as homeschool students within our district. Another group is students that are participating in the academic enrichment programming through the field workshop who may be entering grade six through twelve. Another group is those students who are open enrolling out to a virtual school in another district, letting them know that there's an option here in their home district that they can consider. So those will be the, the key marketing strategies, and that's a population of about a hun, one hundred students. Then we'll also be looking to market the information on our website, but those are the ones that we'll target through direct mailers and direct communication.
And there's a goal of fifty, is that what I'm understanding?
The target population will be fifty or sixty.
Okay, and then capping off at a hundred, did I see that?
The first year, we will only open sixty seats just so that we can get a handle on the impact. Part of the reason that we want a small group to implement is one, to iron out what issues we might have in that process. And two, to make sure that our brick and mortar schools have capacity for students who are electing to take the two in-person classes without over, overloading our classrooms and making sure that when we do that and we look at the percentage of students choosing in-person classes as a component of their participation in Greendale Global, that we have capacity within our brick and mortar schools to handle the additional students.
And to echo what, or remember, Chris said, I think this is really great in terms of innovation. I know that's one of your evaluated points that we have. And I think innovation is really important and I, I just, I, I support this and I appreciate the work that's gone into it with everyone. And Chris, I know you brought some expertise from Waukesha with you, my understanding is, from your own?
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you for that. The only other thing I would add, and I talked to Dr. Midsick about this today and I think I brought it up at the last meeting, is the field workshop does a great job of bringing people who are online, like to have in-person experiences and all that. So thank you for that. I would also like the charter school to consider opportunities like, you know, prom, the musical. And it would be great if these kids could walk at graduation because one of the things that is sometimes missing from online school is that ceremony.
The Independent Charter Board will be convening in the next couple of weeks. And as they're building their handbook, that will be something that's taken into consideration.
Yeah, and I think too, there's a desire to still have, like, they're a student of Greendale Global, but they're a broader student of the Greendale community. And so when we talk about things like co-curriculars and all of those things, I mean, we still have to talk about what that would all look like, but I think that would be a goal of ours in the future as well.
I just had a question about staffing the program. As far as like, is the school looking to pull potentially some current, like, district educators? Or does this be like a process of hiring an all-new set of, like, a success coach as an instructional staff, or has there been discussions of that yet?
Yeah, there's been some discussion. We know that we'll need a minimum of a success coach. And then we may have some additional people services guidance staff that would be used initially. But the online instruction through ASU is teachers hired through ASU. So those teachers would be live. In our conversations with ASU, there was a question about how many students are in an online course for ASU per teacher? And they said that their normal workload is the same as an in-person. So they typically, if they're a full-time teacher, have between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and eighty students in their group. And that is so that they can do some face-to-face video supports with their students and when they're in their classrooms for the once-a-week, one-hour lecture that is video live synchronous, that students have an opportunity to participate and get to know their teacher. So we don't see a need to hire for the academic courses that will be taken through ASU Prep Digital or Prep Global, that that would be provided by ASU as part of the contract that the Independent Charter Board would engage with. So we are not seeing a high volume of in-person staff, but a number of targeted staff members that build those relationships and deliver that in-person community building that happens.
Sure, and is that ASU communities, that's what meant by the salary and benefits for instructional staff? That's just what made me ask, because in the budget, that's what it's?
So there'll be, there'll be, it won't be a bunch of full-time staff. But for example, not sure, but Mr. Del Ponte, for example, might be the administrator responsible for Greendale Global, but it's not going to be a full-time position. So it may be a percentage of his contract. So, but even if he's spending ten percent of his time leading Greendale Global as an administrator, he would need the training. So we'll need, there might be ten people who touch it, but in terms of full-time staff, it might only be one or two full-time.
Got it. Thank you.
One, sorry, one quick question, just kind of going through everything. Do we provide internet access if the kids do not choo, or if they choose to do Greendale Global, and they do not have at-home internet access? Is that something that the school's providing?
Yes. So, when you see on the budget within there, it says capital objects, and it says Chromebooks for 60 students with 25% overrun, and then facility infrastructure, that would be a component there, is to make sure that we have internet access, and all the network stuff, switches and all that stuff that I don't quite understand yet, but...
Have that access at home?
To make sure that there is access.
Okay.
And that is part of the grant application, is how we even ensure that all students have access.
Do we have any examples of districts around us that are using ASU for this purpose?
No, we would be the first. Right now, if anyone in the state of Wisconsin wants to use ASU as their instructional resource, they would have to self-pay. There's no way in the state of Wisconsin that it would be part of a public school.
Thank you.
If I could also just say, too, like, from an innovative value add, so, a couple things about Greendale Global that really stand out would be, I think, the ASU partnership, and the opportunities, not just for, you know, in this case, 610 or 612 education, but also starting to work on college courses as well. But the other thing, too, is blending the model of virtual school with in-person. And so, when you talk about the value that this has, and kind of the things that make it stand out, those are the two, I think, primary things, is that partnership, but also the ability for us to engage with students in person as well.
Mr. Del Ponte, something I brought up at the last meeting when we discussed this was, kind of like, the reverse of the idea of how virtual students could take classes here would be the possibility of in-person Greendale students could take some of those college courses for credit, and what, like, the financial implications that might be for the school.
Sure. So, I, I would think, I think our goal in year one is to just build that foundation with the markets that we are focusing on, but I, if, if we can build that foundation, then I think opening it up at some point in the, in the future would be a goal as well.
So, we're looking for approval.
Any other questions? All right. Looking for a motion?
I'll move approval of the charter school and grant application as outlined in Agenda Item 4.3.
I second.
We have a motion in a second. We'll look for a roll call.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I'm yes. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Moving on to the last action item, or no, I'm sorry. We need to approve parent transportation contracts.
So, this is required by law, that when we provide transportation to our public schools for students, that we are required to provide transportation to our students choosing to enroll in private schools. We have elected to do so in the most cost-effective way, which is to contract with parents, and we need approval of a payment totaling $14,547.60 to be paid to parents for the first semester.
If we don't have any questions, we'll look for, is that a question?
I, I do have one question, and I apologize if I missed it. There was not a link that I saw to payment one, and I don't think that was in our board packet.
Because the students are listed by name, that is student records, and so, that's why it's not publicly posted or available. If you'd like to see the backup documentation, we do have it available in the office.
Okay. And it, what was the amount again? 14,000?
547.60.
Looking for a motion.
I move approval to release payment in the amount of $14,547.60 for parent contract transportation as presented in Agenda Item 4.4.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Looking for a roll call.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I'm yes. Motion passes. Now, the final action item, the 20, 2024, 2025 Budget Amendment.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mitchell to walk you through it.
Yep. So, there were three attachments that were provided in that background document. I'm looking at the second document there, and I can probably bring it up on the screen. But the anticipated revenues for the operational fund are staying at $38,248,971.96, but we're making a transfer there between different source codes for special project grants and miscellaneous of $939. On the expenditure side, making various transfers based on budget updates. And so, that covers both finalized staffing, grants that have been updated, or other special projects that we run where individual budgets have changed since the board approved this in October. The net of all of those changes is a net of zero. So, revenues and expenditures are staying the same for the operational fund. Within the Special Education Fund, there's a budget adjustment of $100, and you see that going in and out. So, the net change there is zero for the expenses. And then, the Cooperative Program Fund, so that represents our Woodland Conference budget, and so, that was updated after the board took action on the budget in fall. And so, this reflects what was requested by the Woodland Conference. So, with that, happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Any questions for Jonathan? No? Did you have one yet? Ah, I thought you put your hand up. All right. No questions. Thanks, Jonathan.
So, a motion?
Yes, we need a motion.
Looking for...
I move the approval of budget amendments as presented in Agenda Item 4.5.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Looking for a roll call?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And I'm yes. Motion passes. Moving on, Risk Management Report.
So, once every other year, we do a report to the board, talking about risk management, programming within the school district. So, what we're trying to do is highlight what we're doing as a district to protect the well-being of students and staff. We want to ensure a safe learning environment. We also want to minimize legal and financial liabilities for the district, and promote a culture of safety. So, we think about this in three areas. What we're doing for preparedness, prevention, and response. And so, if we're thinking about preparedness, we're thinking about ongoing staff training and safety drills that we're doing. We think about prevention, we're going through and doing proactive safety walkthroughs and follow-ups, as well as investing in physical security upgrades. And then, from a response perspective, going through thorough accident investigation and response with any action steps that we need to take from those accident investigations. So, provided in your report is information that we've shared previously, share information regarding our property insurance, workers' compensation, and liability insurance, and what those trends have been over the last five years. The property insurance, we've had a loss ratio of 19%, and that's just one claim that we had over the winter break, '23? '22 into '23? Oh, Ms. Flader was the principal at the time at that building where that happened, so she may have PTSD from that event that did go into her office at the time. But that was one big claim. And so, what we work on with our, our broker consultant is making sure that we minimize the impact that that loss has had, given all the other work that we put in to risk management, and response to accidents, and the fact that that was the only loss that we've had over that five-year period of time. From a workers' compensation level, we're at a loss ratio over that five-year period of time of 24%. That's a really good loss ratio, to be under 25%. So, of our premiums, losses of $144,559. Because we've kept that ratio really low, our broker has been able to negotiate a very aggressive dividend back on that workers' compensation due to that low loss rate. And so, that's something that we continue to work on through all of our risk management strategies. Liability insurance is the highest, so that has been losses of 117%. So, we've actually had higher losses than premiums. The losses there, $236,446. That includes both legal costs and expenditures over that five-year period of time, as well as liability losses, and that covers our vehicle insurance. And so, any losses that we would have for vehicle damage are also included, and that's occurred during that five-year period of time. So, despite that, you can see that that premium for liability insurance has been relatively stable over that five-year period of time. We maintain a good working relationship with community insurance, and we partner with them through that WRMAC cooperative. So, we are having conversations weekly. We had conversations with them today, and continue to do that, and they recognize that we have solid programming in place, and they want to help us as well to ensure that, that ratio becomes more sustainable, but that we continue to have solid risk management programming within the district. So, with that, happy to take any questions that you have about risk management that we have in the district.
Any questions for Jonathan? I'm not seeing any.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we'll be moving on to the second trimester district scorecard review.
So, we have our district department short cycle updates in this board packet, and there are four: business services, communication, human resources, and people services. Next week, you will hear from the schools, which will focus on some of the student achievement work that has been happening. But for tonight, the district departments are here. Mr. Mitchell has agreed to share his, and then you can ask questions about any of the four. Although, Mrs. Burnett is at a federal funding conference in the Wisconsin Dells, which makes Mr. Mitchell really happy.
I like it that we're doing risk management, making sure we don't get in trouble with our federal grants. So, I appreciate the team taking the time on that. So, I'll keep this very brief, just two items highlighting the board's public policy priorities and the upcoming state budget discussions, and then a federal funding update, and I know Kim talked about that earlier. And so, we're thinking about how we allocate our resources in a way that's going to make a difference for kids, and that's what this is all focused on. The Greendale schools, the board's public policy priorities, these three are three that we will likely highlight the most as the administrative team, but we will share all of the public policy priorities that are highlighted. I did finish the, the presentation today, so this is posted on our district budget website, but apologies, it wasn't in the packet ahead of time. I got it to Kristy, so we can get it to all board members. But what is linked in there are the board public policy priorities, and those are also posted separately under the board webpage. But the three that we highlight on the most are the inflationary increase to spendable revenues, as well as market adjustment going back to 2009. The second one, minimum reimbursement of 60% for special education, and English as a second language. And then, three, the need to support initiatives for teacher pipeline, and the challenges that we're having to get an applicant pool for the positions that we have available within the school district. This is a familiar chart. We shared this information with the community when we had budget discussions a year ago, and leading into conversations about the operational referendum, and the gap between inflationary costs versus actual spendable revenues provided since 2009, and that, that gap had grown to $3,380. So, as we've been having conversations projecting forward for the new biennium, we're now talking about the '25, '26, and '26, '27 budget years. We have a link where we've provided our estimates of what those inflationary increases would be over the next biennium. And what we come to is that that gap is going to grow another $200 from $3,380 to $3,578, given state law currently has 325 per student. And so, that's not going to meet the, that CPI calculation. That indexing calculation would come to $418 per student in '25, '26, and $430 in '26, '27. So, again, getting us to about a $200 difference versus what's currently in law. And that's us estimating based off of current trends in inflation. Special education reimbursement, so the board's talking about advocating for at least 60% reimbursement. So, that state reimbursement rate back in the early 80s, so 1981, was at a high of 67%. And that decreased from that period of time all the way to the 2018, 2019 school year, down to 25%. That was the low. And at that time, the state started adding additional revenues to special education to begin to bring that number up. The current law for this last year called for 33.3%, but based on the actual claims, it was slightly lower, and the reimbursement this last year was 32.4%. So, we always receive revenues a year in arrears. So, if we tried to use that 32.4% for what we would receive during this year, we would be at $2,817,32. It will likely be below that, because costs are increasing each year. So, if it's a fixed pot of dollars, there's usually more expenses coming in, so that percentage will likely tick down slightly, but we won't know that until the end of the year. So, it's at 32.4, but if the state were to reimburse us this year at 60% of what was spent last year, we would be at $3,855,000. So, you can see the net impact there is nearly $1.8 million on the budget at a 60% reimbursement rate. Other update we want to provide was federal funding. So, in total, the district receives over $2 million annually, and it's coming from several buckets. The biggest buckets that this is coming from are our title programs, which is the Every Student, I've got it here, Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and then the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, IDEA, for our flow-through funding. Those are the two biggest buckets. But then, the third biggest bucket would be there at the bottom, the USDA, and the meal reimbursement we receive for our food service program. We also receive a large amount of funding for Medicaid, and that goes through both our Regular Education Fund and Special Education Fund, depending on timing of the payment. E-Rate is technology funding, and the board just took action regarding one contract related to E-Rate, and that had a match of $94,000. And then, Carl Perkins, the district's part of a consortium where funds are pooled together between five different districts for a full-time staff member that's focused on youth apprenticeship. And so, we share that with another, another four districts. So, those are examples. That's not the full list of everything that we have, but those are examples of what is covered, and that's the bulk of the funding that's coming through from federal funds. So, the key points with that, as of February 3rd, all claims are up to date for requests for reimbursement. We know that there were questions from the board regarding that, and ensuring that the district is up to date with requesting any funds that we can. The board took action this evening regarding that E-Rate contract, so we will take action to sign that and push that forward tomorrow to ensure we meet all the deadlines. And as we receive more information, if anything does change regarding our federal funding, we will bring that back to the board and share.
So, on the scorecard? On the scorecard, under District Priority Six, we have established a Board Finance Committee to extend the engagement in district budget and share collective insight with state lawmakers, all with the goal of continuing to present a balanced budget. And so, Jonathan Shortcycle is updating you on the progress that we've made towards that goal to date. And so, the other three reports that are there have a similar purpose, and if there's any questions for Jonathan, or Julie, Kitty, we're open. And if there's any questions for Jonathan or Julie, Kitty, we're open.
Any questions? I've not seen any.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll be moving on to the first reading of the policy updates.
Policy committee met a number of weeks ago, and the policies that are brought forward are part of Neola recommendations. Some of them were simply consolidating and increasing clarity. Some are new. There is one in there that I would like to highlight, needs to still be worked on with medical advisor, and that is Policy 5330. One of the things that Neola brought forward is that a number of districts are beginning to stock inhalers. So our current policy allows us to have stock EpiPins and to have stock Narcan. And so some districts are now starting to, with the amount of asthma that might show up without knowing it, that some are stocking inhalers for that purpose if someone were to have a sudden asthmatic attack that they weren't aware that they had. So I am working with the medical advisor to determine if that is something that she's recommending, but it is drafted in the policy here.
Is that something we'd have to bring forward for future considerations, since it is a state, there's a state statute and bylaw for it, as an open order?
Yep, so that is how Neola has put it into the policy, and I'm just verifying with our medical advisor that she is in support of adding that. So, and then if there's any other policies that you wanted to walk through or had questions on?
No, I just want to mention that the policy for programs for gifted and talented has been rewritten. So you might want to look through that one.
Anyone else have anything to add? Any questions? All right, I'm not seeing any. Thank you.
So we'll bring that back for a second reading at the next meeting, and I will have a firm answer from our medical advisor at that time.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Tasha's Legislative Update.
Okay, I guess there's quite a few updates. There's been some education bills that have passed the Assembly this past week. One is regarding the DPI and their scores for the forward testing, as well as for ACT testing. This bill would state that the DPI must use the same cut scores ranges and descriptions as used in the 2019, 2020 school years. For the ACT and pre-ACT, this bill includes using the same assessments and standards as the 21, '22 school year. And they also want the verbiage to go back to below basic, basic, proficient, and advanced. There's another part of a bill stating that requiring school boards to adopt policies to prohibit use of wireless communication devices during instructional time. And I think we already have a policy that kind of addresses that. There's another bill that's heading to the Senate to require cursive writing and including that in the standards. But if I remember correctly, our new CKLA curriculum includes cursive? Okay. In the beginning of Year '27 and '28, schools will need to include a civics class for their graduation requirements. Another one, and I think we already do this as a district, make curriculum and instructional materials available for school district residents for review. And then, the last one was that school districts must spend 70% of its operating expenditures on direct classroom expenses. And the annual pay increases for school administrators would be limited to the amount of the teacher pay increases. Otherwise, there's two people advancing for state superintendent, that's Kenzern Utterly. There was money allocated for early literacy initiatives that we know about, and it was stated in the update that it will most likely revert to the surplus in the state. And then there's another bill out there that's mandating schools to allow access for federal groups and military for recruiting. And so they're looking at like other areas of recruitment, like Girl Scouts, Scouting of America. And I do believe schools are already required to give that information? Or can we opt out? Do you know, Dr. Mizik?
Say that again, that part about the Girl Scout?
Oh, the federal groups, the bill is mandating school access for different groups to look for like military recruits. And they mentioned like Girl Scouts and Scouting of America for like groups that have a lot of students.
Yes, they can have access to directory data, but families have the option to opt out.
Okay. Right, and I think that was it for my update.
Just had one, can I ask one question? Did you have a bill number for that forward ACT? Was there a certain bill number for that?
I didn't write the bill numbers down.
That's okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Board Committee Updates.
So we have the Finance Committee that we have spoken with the members, and so I don't know if you want to walk through with the board under policy, what you will be, who is being appointed to that committee. And the first meeting will be March 13th? 12th, thank you.
Yeah, so the members currently, we have one vacant spot with a progress, or there's an offer in progress. But Brian Bach will be the chairperson. Jonathan Mitchell will be the Director of Business Services. Tasha Hughes is the board member. Dr. Mizik is the superintendent. Staff representative is Erin Schweckel from Canterbury, kindergarten teacher. The second spot is vacant. And the six community representatives are in no particular order. Bill Hughes, Marty Jankowiak, Noel George Yanish, Amy Pavella, Dan Griffin, and Michael Nowak. Yes, very cool. Does anyone have anything to add regarding their committees? We had a park and rec meeting that was canceled because of the snow. But two big things that were shared, pull it up here on the email. Trick or treating will be October 26 from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And the Community Center Playground, that is expected to have the equipment, the new equipment come in sometime in late March. And then the demolition and replacement of the equipment will be as soon as the weather breaks. So that should be up and running, hopefully by mid-April to early May. All right, that will take us to Kathy.
Board Professional Development. Sure, I was not planning on necessarily saying too much. I provided each of you with a flyer. After the convention, I attended a session with the Wisconsin Public Education Network. I have actually gone to some of the summer summits that they're involved with. I spoke with Kristy about it a little bit, but it's not something I'm suggesting we, as a board, necessarily sign on to. But individually, if you're interested, they do some advocacy as well. Obviously, we have our board priorities, so I think we would want to stay in line with that. But I didn't know if anyone had any questions about it. It was just something I wanted to share. They have school districts that sign on as partners with them. There are several districts throughout the state that are partners with them. Dr. Mizik and I talked a little bit about why that maybe isn't the best thing, you know, for us. We are doing some other advocacy with SWSA, WASBO, and so forth. So I just wanted to put that group out there and see if anyone had any questions.
So is this group something you joined, like WASB?
So it's not, I don't know, Dr. Mizik, if you want to speak to that. It's a group that's doing advocacy. It's supposed to be nonpartisan. I had some conversations that sometimes it does seem like there is some partisanship to the work they do, but it is by and large supposed to be to support public schools.
You can donate to the organization, and donations sometimes are met as membership.
That was it. Didn't know if anyone had any questions. They will oftentimes at convention have speakers come in. They did have Dr. Jill Utterly come to the last event and spoke at the night of the state convention, just talked about some of the initiatives of the state.
All right, thank you. All right, last up, Board Calendar.
So it's a short week. Our next meeting is a week from today. Between now and then, there is a Black History Month celebration at College Park on Thursday evening. There is a blood drive at College Park on Friday, if you'd like to participate. And then on Saturday, Greendale Middle School is hosting its first forensics meet. So there will be...
In years?
No, like ever. We posted forensics performances by our students, but this is a competitive meet that brings in students who are on the forensics team from other schools. So it is the first competitive meet hosted at Greendale Middle School, and that is happening on Saturday. So if you want to see some students speaking, you are welcome to stop by. So all of those are public events at which a quorum of the board may be present, but no board business will be discussed.
Is that something that some of our English teachers headed up, or how did that come to be?
The Greendale Education Foundation supported the launch of the Forensics Club in 2018? 2017, 2018? And so they have been, they've fielded a competitive team. It is part of the Wisconsin League for Forensics, and a lot of middle schools will host meets, but we just attended the meets. There's a state competition in the middle of March, and we had students qualify every year. Forensics meets hosted onsite as a fundraiser. So the coaches for the forensics team that's been in place since 2017 or '18 said we'd like to host a meet so that we can raise funds to support our program. And that is how it came to be. If you would like, I don't think they're still looking for judges, but typically when you attend a meet or host a meet, you have to bring a set number of judges. And so if you're at all interested in being trained as a judge at some point in the future, you could judge for forensics. So those are the items on the calendar.
All right, thank you. Additional comments? All right, I'm gonna have to read it. All right, welcome to all those who will be speaking this evening. We would like to remind you that school board meetings are for the purpose of carrying out the business of the district. They are official business meetings held in public through School Board Bylaw 0167.3. The board allows citizens to make comments by scheduling two opportunities on the agenda to receive citizen comments. Persons wishing to address the board are asked to come to the podium and state their name and address for the record. Comments are limited to one time. Individuals who will be speaking will be limited to three minutes. Citizen comments are limited to a period not to exceed 30 minutes. In accordance with the intent of the Open Meetings Law, please be aware that although the Board of Education welcomes comments from the public, it cannot discuss or debate items brought up during public comments. Board bylaws require that all comments are directed at the presiding officer, who is me. Comments must also refer to items within the legitimate jurisdiction of the board. As the presiding officer, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate comments when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant to the business of the board. If the presiding officer exercises his right to terminate comments under the above guidelines, written comments may be submitted to the presiding officer instead. You may speak.
Hi, my name is Heather Godley, 5331 Millbank Road. Sorry about that. I just wanted to take the opportunity during Public Schools Week to thank all of you for all that you do to preserve and strengthen our public schools.
Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn. The next meeting is March 3rd.
We timed it, one minute and 30 seconds, that's how long it takes you. Which is half the time of their comments.
Yeah.